Okay, we're gonna open up at six thirty. Uh, six thirty, I hate to on the hand for planning board, um, March thirteenth. No, wait a minute, what's today, ten?
April tenth.
April tenth.
Well, it's been so long you forgot how to do it. It's been so long you forgot.
This other one here is for the change, right? Yep. And this is the agenda. Too many pieces of paper. Towne Hansen, office of the planning board, five twenty-two Lyndy Street, second floor, Hansen, Massachusetts. I want to read that the planning board recording. I hereby call on April tenth, two thousand twenty-three, a meeting of the Town of Hansen Planning Board to order at six thirty. I would also like to announce for all those in attendance that this meeting is being recorded and distribution on the Wetman Hansen Community Access. Playback, times and other related information on this recording can be found at WHCA.tv. A smile. The agenda for tonight is, the first thing is on is the minutes, do you want to?
Motion to approve the minutes of March thirteenth and the twenty-seventh.
Uh, we don't have the minutes of March twenty-seventh yet.
Okay, so we'll do the minutes from March thirteenth.
All right. We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Tony, you have the people with the here tonight, right?
Yep.
So you will go on to the appointment?
Before you do it.
We gotta wait a few minutes, I guess.
Mr. Chair, um, if the board would like to vote on the March twenty-seventh meeting, uh, minutes to be moved, they'll be ready for the next hearing. So if you want to vote on, uh, moving those to the twenty, to the twenty-fourth of April.
I'll make a motion and move the March twenty-seventh meeting minutes to the next meeting.
Which is April twenty-fourth. April twenty-fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you sure it's April twenty-fourth? April twenty-seventh?
Twenty-fourth.
I think it's wrong on here.
Yes, tentatively, April twenty-seventh.
Yeah, that is wrong. It'll be twenty-fourth.
You're right, it's twenty-fourth, yeah.
Yep.
Uh, this motion will be March twenty-seventh meeting minutes to April twenty-fourth.
Motion's been made, second. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have six thirty-six. If you'd like to, uh.
I know you want to get out early.
Okay, well, we'll move on. We have an appointment at six thirty-five to discuss the revised site plan for one-twenty Roller Coaster Road. Owner, Robert Gosling, engineer, grading counseling, LLC.
Oh, he has a plan up there.
Can I get your name, please?
Yep, for the record, Scott and I are a grading consultant, and we have the applicant, Bob Gosling. Um, so Bob's the new owner of this property. This property went through an previous, a public way, inadequate access permit. Everything was approved. All he's looking to change here is to change the house that's going in. So all septic components, all drainage components, everything that was fully better by the board will remain. The proposed building is proposed within the same exact footprint as the plan that was approved. The only real difference here is, is you'll see off to the right, he wants to put a garage underneath. So with that, there's some different grading up front and then to the rear. To the rear, there was a retained wall back here, but he decided to slope it out, one and a half to one slope instead. But other than that, everything else has remained exactly the same as the approved plan. So we're really just looking for approval for him to move forward with this design.
Motion to approve. Tony, did you have a chance to review it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, this is, this is a case of trying, just making sure that the most current owner and most current plan, that they're gonna get a building permit on, is on file with the planning board. And so, uh, other than grading, the drainage is being maintained, the house size is being maintained, they're just putting in a drive under garage.
Second. Okay, is the motion made at second? Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to make my point is, uh, that's a, so it would look so much better further back and take down some of the hill and do whatever you want, because you know, our only concerns have ever been the adequate access and the, uh, and the A&amp;R. But where the house goes in the end really is inconsequential at this point. So it's up to you. We're about to approve it, so, you know, it's up to you.
We're about to vote.
Yeah, exactly.
The owner isn't here. Um, he was under the impression that, that in order to move the house back, there would be additional loopholes to jump through here, additional obstacles, I guess. Uh, I mean, yeah, it is, it is pretty steep back up there. So in order to move the house back, it would require a considerably more grading, but if that's something that the board would consider approving with all of the other components remaining the same, I can speak to him, see if that's something he's interested in.
Well, I suppose we can just move forward and approve it as is. But you know, I guess my, my point was, you know, like, uh, the other person who did this develop, you know, who wanted to develop this chose this plan, not us. You know, and I just think it'd be nicer, a bigger house, three-car garage if you want, you know, go back in the hill, get rid of some of it, you know. Uh, I'm just pointing out that if that's what you want to do, you shouldn't feel constrained by the fact that, you know, the prior hearings were a little contentious because that was mostly about the road itself, right, and the adequate access.
Okay, so if, if you were to choose to go down that route and push the house back, what would the approval process for that be? Would it be so it's what we're doing now?
I think it'd have to be a public hearing. We'd have to re-notify the abuddies because it's such a big change.
Yeah. But I mean, you know, I mean, it obviously had to go through another hearing, but, you know, it's your house, do what you want.
Okay.
So, but, uh, we're ready to approve it now, so it's up to you.
Yeah, but what I would suggest is if you could continue to approve it and then I could bring this information to the owner and allow them to make that decision.
Yeah.
I mean, you can approve this no matter what, even if you come back with a different house, it's gonna have to be a new, new, I think a new filing with a new public hearing.
Yeah.
Correct.
So they can approve what they have here and you, and you can move forward with what's there. If you choose to make it different, then I would say that you'd have to do a new filing and a new public hearing because it'd be such a big change and that the abuddies should be aware of it.
Sure.
So you have a motion right now by Mr. Kim at second, by Mr. Benignado to accept that plan.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Let's see. I'm getting through this.
The light's pretty bright.
I might have a stroke. Was he on the agenda?
No, he's here, he's probably doing the site work.
Doing what?
He's probably doing the site work or something.
Wonder why?
Yeah, it's okay.
No, he, no, he, I think it might have just been for informational purposes.
Yeah. Okay, uh. Okay, Joe Campbell, open space, what do you get to say about that? All right, we'll move on, Don Ellis, okay, High Street, we are still working on that. Uh, there's been some movement, but the last meeting we had, we didn't have a quorum, so we couldn't do much, but the, uh, some of the abuddies on High Street saw some stakes out there, the new people moved in and had all kinds of questions, so we kind of answered their questions and filled in the information that they were looking for and showed us the plans, but nothing was discussed or anything else, but we didn't have a quorum. Kevin?
Uh, no update for this evening.
Me either.
John?
That one's up. I don't have any.
Paul?
Nothing new.
Nothing new. Okay, discussion on Environmental Partners' observation report on Stonewall Estates. That's at six fifty, but we're a little early now.
A little early.
Well, we can make a motion to go out of order, right?
That's a hearing.
People may come.
Yeah. Do partners?
Uh, if you'd like, Mr. Chair, we could do some of the housekeeping.
Sure. You want signs and permits?
Yep, there's a voucher, uh, the sign for, uh, services provided by Environmental Partners for the report that they did on Stonewall Estates. I know Mr. Campbell's not here, so.
So we all have to sign it.
So you probably should, I'll sign it. So it's a invoice for fifty-two hundred dollars.
I brought your hand.
Yeah.
Oops, sorry.
I didn't know where I threw that.
Just stuck a little bit more in the time.
Is anywhere in the bottom here, huh?
Yep.
So is it a good observation report?
Yes, I think it's thorough. Yeah.
Okay, got himself in the shadow though.
He did.
Did you sign this as a authorized signer or?
You can, you're acting chairman. I mean, I would sign your name and just put acting chairman. And as long as you all sign it, should be fine. And while we have five minutes, if you'd like, I can go over some of, uh, town planner update.
Yes, please.
Uh, so first thing, the MBTA, I can continue to work with the creating the zoning districts so the state has a toolkit which allows you to use GIS to create zones. And within those zones, it'll tell you how many single families homes there are, multifamily homes there are, what's usable area, land area, what isn't. Uh, so I created three districts. The intention is not necessary to actually create three districts, but I'm doing three districts to see how it'll, the numbers work out. So I've gone through that process and I've passed that information along to Old Colony Planning Council because they're our technical assistance, under the technical assistance grant, the other ones who are going to help us in the creation of the zoning and the language. And, uh, so I pass it along to them for their folks to review and get feedback on. I have, let's say, three districts, two would be on the north side of Main Street, the third would be on, uh, and one on the south side of Main Street. The one on the south side of Main Street, I think, is the least of the three, so if I had to pick, that's one I would toss out. And the one on the north side, the other two that are on the north side of Main Street. One encompasses a large area of, uh, currently privately owned, but vacant land. And then the other part kind of extends outside the half mile, but it encompasses the LZ Thomas School and heads out towards that area. So I'm just waiting for some feedback from Old Colony Planning Council on India people and then I'll start to, I'll continue to fine tune that as I go along.
So you're thinking a change in the use of that, like from presidential business? Is that what you're saying?
No, this has to do with the MBTA, the multifamily zoning.
Oh, okay, all right. Sorry.
So the company Verdantis has commenced the peer review for Zero County Road, the Meadowbrook subdivision. They have a preliminary, uh, report complete, uh, which they've passed along to me, I haven't had a chance to sit down with it, I'll do that on Wednesday, uh, and give them some, they're looking for some feedback. Uh, so they'll have that ready for the next meeting, which is actually, um, Monday, April twenty-fourth, the agenda is incorrect, it says the twenty-seventh. Uh, they'll have that ready for that meeting. When I get back from vacation, I'll also be getting a letter prepared regarding the rider and the bylaw, referring to the bylaw, if you start one project, you're not supposed, you're supposed to finish it before you move on to the next.
Yep.
So I'll be, uh, uh, coming up with a draft letter on that. I've also come up with, uh, a draft letter to address some of these open projects that exist, a letter that'll go out to some of these developers to try and get an idea of what is, what is their intention, are they intend, are they gonna finish, uh, are we gonna have to take the bond, what's, what's going on? Also, on the twenty-fourth, uh, I'd say pack a lunch because we're going, that's gonna be the public hearing for the zoning bylaw amendments, uh, as required under section five of the zoning act, you have to have a public hearing. And so the second advertisement for that public hearing will be, um, the thirteenth, and the first one was the sixth. And so, uh, on that night, we'll go through, and if anyone in the public has, you know, comments they want to come in to make, that's part of the process. And then, uh, once you decide after that hearing whether to push the, push them forward, then we can pass that along to the select board and, uh, they'll have those articles ready for the town meeting. And they've separated them, uh, into separate articles so that, you know, if they were all on one article and one gets shot down, then they all die, which would just be a waste of work. So they have separated them, so at least that way, if there are any that are not, uh, passed that town meeting, those will just go by the wayside and then, uh, the ones that are passed will move forward. So that's what I, that's pretty much what I have for town planner update at this point.
I have a question. Is a fourteen-ton property, is the town still holding on to it or?
Well, I know that, I know the, some of that's been kicked around, I think, at that strategic planning meeting that we had at Camp Kawani.
Yep.
There's a group, uh, that's dealing with public buildings, I think some public properties. So, and I know the Economic Development Committee is also interested in something like that. I think it, we have to, I've applied for a grant under the One Stop, and if we get it, it'll provide monies so that we can get technical assistance for the property that's adjacent to the water department building right now, that's in the, in commercial industrial area. And it's technical assistance of, you know, looking at what resource areas are there for wetlands, how, what, those would impact the development of that property and, you know, see what we can get out of it as far as a yield for, you know, whether it's one parcel for a one business or a small business park, you know. So, um, the One Stop grants, I'm moving those forward to the full application process.
Okay, just to add to that real briefly, but I know, like, back when, um, Bill Cushing was on the ZBA, uh, him and I had a conversation about preapproving some of these sites so that, you know, if we wanted to auction them off, they'd be, um, they'd be worth more because.
They'd be permitted.
They're already permitted, you know. So I wonder if that's a, an avenue that we want to approach, try to work with the ZBA and, you know, get some of these sites, like that one we talked about for the, um, you know, for the people that were here last week. You know, it'd be nice if some of these were pre-approved and ready for permitting so that, you know, I think people would feel more comfortable purchasing, I think they'd go faster for more money, you know. So, uh, just gotta throw that out there.
Yeah, it's been a period to do that.
Well, it is, but it's a process.
Oh, yeah.
Again, you know, it's like you have to work with the ZBA, which could have its difficulties, you know. But I think it's worth, um, you know, an attempt anyway, because I think, you know, the idea of selling these properties for as much as possible. Yeah, I think that's the path to do.
Now you're in here, I didn't pick my head up. Sorry about that. Thank you. No problem. Now I even have my hearing here.
That possibly could be over a, over a year process, do you think?
I don't know, about a year, you know, it's, it is, but it is a process. I think if we, if we decided like, here's, here's six, seven properties that, well, we should maybe pick one and see how it goes, and then we'd get a real sense of, you know, whether it was something that we could actually do, you know. So, uh, I don't know, how you guys feel about that.
The properties by the industrial park are calling for the most, the most amount of life.
Sure.
So.
So, I mean, that's, that's another one. I know you're talking about selling that as a, as a commercial thing, but again, I think, uh, a buyer would be more inclined to, uh, bid a little higher knowing that, you know, um, all of the hard work's been done, you know.
You'd have to do the delineation and all that, the perks and so on.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Town would have to invest the money in it.
Absolutely. So that, but I think it's worth, um, exploring at least, you know, like, you know, say it ends up being forty grand and nobody wants to kick the money out, but I think they're gonna get it back, so, you know.
Especially the dirt, yeah.
You know, so, uh.
Well, if, you know, if you use town people to do it, the water, how to do the perk, use the conservation to do the.
Right.
Won't be any, uh, a large cost to the town.
Yeah, and the best thing is it'd be non-adversarial, because you know, like, the, if the conservation looks at it and says, you know, uh, there's, there's only a small area in the back and this is what we're looking for, then you're done, you know. And then you have their stamp of approval. ZBA, same thing, planning, you know, it's just like, if it's all just done ahead of time, it's like, makes life so much easier for everybody.
Just a matter of getting the approval through the, in that case, the ZBA for whatever goes in there.
Absolutely.
How about a good idea?
Yeah, it's worth looking at, I guess, I think.
Yeah, also, yeah, absolutely.
Just like Tony, a lot of work to do, that's all.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna bring that up, like, who, you know, uh, who's gonna effectuate this, which is an important question, you know.
Yeah.
Do we need a consultant or somebody from the outside or, you know, I don't know.
Well, I guess, I guess obviously there would have to be a, a lead department to say, okay, we're going to try and go after this. And in essence, yes, we'd have to obviously retain the services of a botanist because, uh, whether it's Phillips Street or up in the industrial park, you do, both of those have resource areas.
Yeah.
That need to be delineated and then obviously the, uh, services of a, uh, engineering and land surveying company to locate the flags, put them on a plan.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, you know, filing paperwork with the Conservation Commission, that's, that's, you know, you can have a consultant do it, I know how to do it.
Yeah, oh, no, I'm just, you know, I'm thinking of your time, you know, I'm not, you know, I know it sounds like a great idea, but in reality, there could be, you know, pitfalls to be unwary, so I'm just thinking, I think it's worth us trying it at least once, it's just a matter of figuring out the logistics of it.
Yeah, and if, and if you can get everybody on the same page to want it, you know, and not have a, um, silo effect of, let's say, one board saying, yeah, we'd like this idea, and other one saying, geez, I really don't want to see that, anything go there, yeah.
I gotta be honest.
I just recommend that you ask it by town council, just to see if there's any ramifications from it that's happened, other towns doing it. Like, does it put the town on the hook if something should go wrong, you know?
Well, I think after my discussion with Bill at the time, he did go to town council, he asked, um, whoever that was overseeing this stuff, and they didn't see a problem with it, they thought it was a good idea. So, but we don't use them anymore, so, you know, yeah, probably should get somebody to, everybody to take a look at it and decide if it's something they want to do. I know, uh, when I was in Braintree, they did it all the time, especially for schools, like, everything was pre-approved before it even, um, broke ground or any of that stuff, you know, so.
I would think that probably the select board would probably be the first, the board to initiate that, because in essence, they're the, you know, the owners. Yeah, they're in charge, yeah, so, and then they could.
Are any of these any low-hanging fruits, sales that they could do? Habitat for Humanities?
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, even the, even the low-hanging fruit ones, uh, take a, it's a process to get them through. But yeah, that's an, I did think of like Habitat for Humanity as a potential.
I think Habitat for Humanities, you could literally gift it to them, right, but knowing that, you know, once they're done with the house and it's all finished, you're gonna get taxes, you know, so you don't make the money on the, on the sale itself, maybe, you know, which is gonna be pretty low anyway, because they're not the most luxurious sites, so to speak, you know. So, um, it might, again, you know, show all the smaller lots, Habitat for Humanity, and say, hey, pick a couple and, and see how it goes, and if they're interested, then we can get rid of them and get them on the tax roll.
I believe, I believe that there was a property, that there was discussion between, I think, the Conservation Commission and Habitat for Humanity that to do a swap of, I think they had, I think Habitat for Humanity had a property and maybe it wasn't the best.
Was it on Pleasant Street?
I don't know the, the finer points, but it was, I think, they, they had a property, but the conservation was like, well, listen, we're willing to swap something that's say better for what you have, then put that one in conservation and give you something, you know, so.
So, yeah, I mean, you know, I think it's worth exploring, I bet having that, you know, at least we could get a couple of, and that would, would also work toward our affordable housing, I mean, it's only one or two, but it's better than nothing.
Yeah, I mean, right now we're at four point five nine percent.
Exactly.
All right, well, that's all I had to say about it, anyway. So do we want to have a subcommittee to look into this, or what do we want to do?
Uh, well, if you, I guess the first thing you could do is, I could write a letter to this, on behalf of the planning board, to the select board, asking them to, you know, the planning board is interested in seeing these properties, try and move forward and, you know, just trying to basically say to the select board, hey, planning board would like to see this happen, what do you guys think, and would you initiate it, you know?
I like that, it's not really a good answer.
Why don't you check first, though?
Yeah.
Before we get to that point.
Yeah, 'cause that, yeah, because I think, yeah, the select board would be the ones initiating, but at least if the planning board is saying to the select board, hey, we'd like to see this happen, and we'd like to see you initiate that, and, you know, get their feedback, and, yeah, and I can reach out to the council on that.
But don't put a label on it, that it's all housing for humanity.
Yeah, it's just, it's just to investigate, it's, it's more like to, in, uh, take these properties and investigate the resource areas, get those delineated and permitted so that the town can see what they have available, uh, for use.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, you want to move on?
Yeah.
You have six fifty PM, discuss the Environmental Partners' observation report from Stonewall Estates.
Yep, so the, on February fifteenth, Environmental Partners, uh, submitted a, um, report on Stonewall Estates, along with photographs. The overall, uh, the overall census really with the report is that, yes, there's obviously some issues, basically we'll call it where. So they talk about, uh, a guardrail in, uh, point number one, uh, guardrail was not observed on the south side of Litchfield Lane, approved plans, propose a guardrail. Some of these points that they make, like I said, like regarding this guardrail, um, I need to go back into the folder for the file for this and go back through all the paperwork, because there's a lot of paperwork that was done regarding the roadway as-built plans, those plans were reviewed, uh, there was, uh, meetings with the planning board at the time. So I'm gonna go back and take a look and see if for some, maybe some reason that guardrail was maybe, um, maybe the planning board waived at a later date or let it, you know, didn't require it, uh, because I know that when I did get into this early on, it did reach a point where the reviewers for the town, on behalf of the town, said, yeah, the plans are good to go, move it forward to, for the, uh, roadway acceptance process. So I'd have to take a look at that and see what, what, if anything, caused the change regarding the guardrail, and they talk about a street light and a hydrant. Points three through, uh, let's see, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, uh, pretty much talk about some basic stuff, some damage to the sidewalk, uh, in this particular case, they talked about, there's supposed to be a grass strip here in the image one, it's an eighteen-inch grass strip, and you see there's gravel there. It's not something that I think the town. It's not something that I think the town put out there, I'm guessing that's probably a homeowner that did that, so they wouldn't have to cut the grass. Uh, but, you know, it's, there's supposed to be a grass strip. Image number two shows a, uh, curb stop for a water, a water shut-off that's sticking up as a tripping hazard. Uh, image three, uh, there's this catch basin, um, which is sitting near a driveway, they put a berm behind it, and, but the requirements under the subdivision control are supposed to be, there's supposed to be a granite curb behind that, but, uh, somehow this is what wound up being constructed.
You can't really put a granite behind it if that's the driveway.
Right.
Get your vehicles in and out.
Right, and, and I think the unfortunate part too is that this is the berm and this is the gutter line, so you're really only catching about half of that catch basin. And then general wear, I mean, you know, the berm here is deteriorated, so there would obviously need to be some repair work done there. They talk about the wheelchair ramp in image five, uh, that it's not installed per approved plans. In the image number six, the catch basin at Station Ten Plus Zero, uh, has sunk a bit, so that would need some work. Uh, and then...
Are there resource areas on this site? Because this is looking kind of familiar to me.
Are there resource areas? I'd have to go back and look through all the plans to tell you if there are, I wouldn't be surprised if there are.
Is this up at Deerfield, uh...
It's, it's, uh...
Fifty-eight near Gottesberg, wouldn't it?
I think, I think it might be, I, I'm trying, like, I'm having this, like, um, you know, epiphany, like, I've seen this before. And, uh, and I know, so I guess my question would be, uh, there were, I don't think they were ever as-built submitted for this, because if they were, I would think that anybody on a planning board would have some, some questions, you know what I mean?
Just before my time.
They, they did actually submit...
If this is what, what, what you're saying.
Yeah, they did submit...
Yeah.
They did submit as-built plans. Uh, they did submit as-built plans which were eventually signed off by the Planner Board at the time.
Really?
Yeah.
That's an extension towards, uh, half of the subdivision was done and they extended all?
No, this is two, two, two roads, let me see if I can, uh...
Where is this?
I'm trying, I'm trying to picture it in my mind, but like, I'm just saying, I feel like, you know, maybe I've been to too many hearings or something, but this looks like wildly familiar to me. Not that it really matters, it's just like, um, so the point is to get this road approved? Because I, because my only question at the end of this thing, I don't see, it's probably gonna cost you X amount of money to get this done, you know, because that's gonna be the first question that, um...
Well, it looks like it's working, I don't see it anymore.
Yeah, but what was that, in the middle of August?
Well, that's when they worked, that's, that's sort of once a year.
That one time a year, that's when they took that picture.
Yeah, okay, for some reason I cannot access the H, S drive, but there are as-built plans, so the, on, on this, uh, which I can email to everyone.
So you're saying there's a, um, a Mylar at Registry of Deeds, signed by the Planning Board, saying that they were okay with, um...
There's a Mylar signed by the Planning Board at the time, not recorded, because what happened is this went to the Select Board who voted to, uh, accept it as a public way in two thousand and five. And according to town council, that vote still stands. Then, uh, it went before, I believe it was October town meeting in two thousand and five, but was held back. I believe it was May two thousand and six, town meeting voted to accept it as a public, uh, both Proudfoot Way and Litchfield Lane as public ways. What happened though was, within the hundred and twenty days, the town didn't secure the necessary easements and title. Don't know why. Because that never happened, the vote basically becomes void. So, there are Mylars with the roadway acceptances, there was, there's actually two sets. One, they're the same sets, one has signatures from the Planning Board at the time, and then the other one has a signature block but wasn't signed. So, it becomes a case of, we'll call it a matter of just procedure, but then the town still has to secure those easements that they were meant to secure back then.
Which all costs money.
Which all costs money.
Yeah.
Why they didn't secure it, I don't know, there isn't anything in the files that tell me, give me any insight into that.
So there's no money left on either one of these sites either, right?
No.
Because they gave the money back because they figured they were done.
Right, yeah. So the rest of these images are basically the existing drainage control structures that are out there and drainage systems obviously have not been maintained. So there's a lot of vegetation in the detention basins, uh...
That's no different than any other development town.
No.
The Highway Department hasn't been doing any of this work in the last twenty years that I can think of.
Right, so, so what I've seen in the report is nothing major as far as day two repair work, but obviously this should be, we'll call it day two maintenance, you know, just to get out there and take out the vegetation out of the detention basins and minor work like patching up, uh, some of the berm.
Yeah, but this kind of stuff though, you, you could just drive around town to any development in the area that's twenty years old and it's gonna look the same, right? So the only real difference that I can see in my mind is the cost of having, uh, the deeds, uh, updated and all that stuff, that's where the real money's gonna be, is in the legal fees. This stuff here, I mean, you know, uh, this just looks like, uh, deferred maintenance, just like the rest of the town.
Yes.
You'd drive, you'd also drive around other towns it the same way.
Oh, yeah, you know, it's, it's like low, it's like low on the, on the priorities, you know.
I think probably, probably the biggest expense, just looking at the photos, probably the biggest expense would be this catch basin. Because you'd have to take that grate out, uh, you know, pull the, all the bricks out of there and reset it and so that you get it to the proper elevation.
So, so couldn't we, like, ask the highway server to, uh, evaluate, like, the cost to at least bring things to where, you know, uh, they're safe and, uh, usable?
Yes.
So that we know that, plus wherever the legal fees are.
Yes, yes, we definitely can do that. So, basically what I'd be looking for from the board tonight is to accept this report as, uh, presented, and then, yes, I could get in touch with the highway superintendent and say, okay, here's the report, what do you think would be the costs for you to go in and repair it, the defects, if you will, or the, it's not even defects, it's just age, you know, uh, of the things they point out.
No, maybe that's not done.
Right.
Right.
And then he could give us, uh, he can give us a letter stating what those costs would be. You know, like I said, I'm not seeing anything day two that says, you know, look, there's a sinkhole in this road and it's gonna cost a lot of money to fix it, you know? So...
But, yeah, like, you know, like, like we were saying earlier, it's just, it just looks like a twenty-year-old road that has been maintained.
Yeah.
Yeah. With like that thing sticking up out of the sidewalk and, um...
Yeah, this...
There's a thing back there with no grate on it, you know? A kid could get in there or something, so, you know, those are things that you, I would think that if we...
Is that safety, is it?
Yeah, go do it right away, you know?
You can, you can do some patches, just build, build it around and taper it off, so...
Yeah, I mean, looking at this right here, this looks to me like this is a patch, that this curb stop was replaced. That, that this curb stop was replaced once, and when they reset it, they didn't set it at the proper elevation, because you can see that looks like, to me, like a cut line in the patch, so...
They probably pulled it up because the water, about the money around here, pulled it up so they could get, to shut off the water to the house for some odd reason. Is that a water shut-off?
Yeah, that's a water shut-off to the house.
Yeah, it's probably buried, so they dug it up, lifted it up and, and then just...
Yeah, the only time they would do it is if they had to shut the water off.
Yeah. So, um, so that's, you know, it, it's, the report, you know, I think they did a, a good job, uh, they were thorough, um...
Just no cost on anything, right?
They didn't put any cost on anything, no, that's not what they were asked to do.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the observational report. Yeah, second.
Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, you had something to say, right? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Uh, no, I was gonna say, and they came in under budget.
Okay, that's good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Actually, the invoice, invoice that you signed was for this report and it came in under budget.
So it'd be nice to get these on the, on the, um, on the book, you know, so to speak.
Right, so I had, I had hoped to have these for May town meeting, but it just didn't happen, so...
Can we get our money back for the, uh, private wayside?
Well, we know we could probably take it down. And then, so I'm hoping to get this all squared away and get it on for October, you know?
Okay, moving on. Six fifty-five, town meeting articles for the survey service of the current Highway Department site.
Okay, so that's item number four on your, so, um...
I think they should do this themselves, but that's just me.
So Weston and Sampson provided a proposal to the Highway Department and they will look at, uh, environmental and hazardous materials and they will also hire an outside land surveyor to establish the property lines. As we know, there has been a plan that was done already, an A and R plan on, on file in the town hall, not at the registry, that the survey work for that property's already been done. This is all part of the process of looking at this existing Highway Department site and how, at hopefully some point in the future, we can put a new highway building with your, where the ball fields are, because the ball fields will, say, hopefully move over to McQuon, and so this is part of the process.
Are you talking about twenty-one E or something?
Uh, they're gonna do, it's, yes, it's similar, yeah, similar to twenty-one E, they're gonna do some work and see what's in, what's in the ground so that they know, um, beforehand, you know, they don't want to go put a foundation in the ground and then find out, oh, oh, you know, dirty dirt, not good. So that's part of the, what Weston and Sampson's gonna do. Now, the Highway Department Superintendent had asked if the Planning Board would be willing to propose an article to appropriate these monies, uh, because he has quite a few articles going to town meeting.
Sounds like a personal problem.
So this, this was, this was on, uh, I did write, it, there is a placeholder, uh, I did write up an article, um, for appropriating thirty thousand dollars now. ARPA money, uh, we have found out that ARPA money can be used for this, so this is the article before we knew about ARPA money. So, uh, this article could be rewritten to, you know, vote to appropriate thirty thousand dollars from ARPA for the, for the work that Weston and Sampson is, is calling for.
Who, who's proposing money?
Well, this is an article that the Planner Board would be putting before town meeting and we'd be looking to use ARPA money to pay for it.
So that's how you, that's how that...
What's that?
That's gonna read...
What's that called, money?
ARPA, ARPA.
ARPA?
Yeah, American Recovery...
Free money.
Yeah, the government money, federal government money.
ARPA?
ARPA, A R P, A R P A.
Motion to accept the...
Uh, you want to add anything about, I can add something about the ARPA funds?
Yep. Yeah, because I was gonna say, like, that's the first question they're gonna ask you, is where's the money coming from?
Appropriate thirty thousand dollars from ARPA funding.
As soon as you give it to them, the first question's gonna ask.
To retain.
What's, what's the ARPA standpoint?
American Recovery, yeah. Can't think of what the piece stands for, the last one's ACT.
Oh, that's all right then.
Yeah.
Well, where'd you get it from, Home Colony or...
No, no, it's the government money, the federal government money.
I know, but I didn't, it puts you on to it sometimes.
No, I spoke, I spoke to the town accountant and, uh, the town administrator, but the town accountant brought up and said, you can use ARPA money for this, because one of the last hearings we had, maybe the, either the last one or the one before that, we, this was brought up, and we talked about funding, where, where's the funding gonna come from, and so we, I looked and spoke to the town accountant and he said, yeah, you can use ARPA money for that, so...
Yeah, so it's four.
Right. Now, of course, you know, we have a pot of ARPA money and a lot of people are reaching into the pot trying to get some money for their own thing.
Every time we mention money, they say, well, she was ARPA fund.
Yeah. So, um, so I'll, I've added that language, so if you want to vote on whether to approve it and move it forward or...
So moved.
So, Mr. Benignato made the motion?
Yeah. I'll second it.
He made the motion, you're seconding.
Oh.
Oh, true. Any discussion?
No.
No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've already had your update, correct?
Yes, sir.
Paid the invoices?
Yeah.
Next planning meeting?
The, uh, the only other thing, the only other thing I'd ask you, the only other thing I'd ask you to vote on... The, the only other thing I'd ask you to, uh, vote on is, just for the record, to accept the Weston and Sampson proposal dated March second, two thousand and twenty-three.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, seven.
I think I got it right this time.
So I guess the next would be smosh, uh, a motion to set the next hearing date, which is April twenty-fourth, not twenty-seventh, um, two thousand and twenty-three.
So move when you say it.
So if you want to vote on that?
Seconded, so you change the date to, from April twenty-seventh to the twenty-fourth. Second, correct?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, zero.
Is that a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second.
Nope.
Hold on.
Hold on, hold on.
Next is...
Chopping the gun, yeah.